Hearing of the zoning board appeals for the town of Grand Allen is now in session. This meeting will also be joined by Zoom through a link from our webpage and via the side button to. Ladies and members of the board, Matty Harris, John Battle, Dan Varic Sillies, Robert Nussmer, and chairman, and this is Mike Tadaro, he's an alternate. One thing that we should all know that he can participate in all matters tonight, can make comments or whatever, but he cannot. Matters before the board this evening will be taken in order in which they appear on the agenda. The board shall hear the side of appeals pursuant to the provisions of laws of state of New York. So the legal hearing and all participants should be, should consider themselves to be sworn to make accurate statements in charge of bringing all pertinent facts to the board's attention. Any discovery of false testimony handled with holding the class with the grounds for early review and reconsideration. And these agenda items are discussed. The appellant or the representative will be addressed to present their request. After the board hears the appall, we will hear from anyone wishing to speak for or against each issue. All parties will be required to give their name and address for the record. Once a determination has been made, any party who feels aggrieved by the ZBAs decision, may file Article seventy of proceeding with the State Supreme Court within thirty days of the filing of said decision. The hearing will all commence. First, I'll please give your name and address for the record. That would be. Elaine. Yeah, one one three one east, excuse me, one one three one West River Road.
My name is Elaine Castle. I live at eleven thirty-one West River Road.
Brad, tell us what you'd like to do.
Okay, I'm just requesting the bearings to have a custom carport, not a kit, but a custom carport filled directly in front of my garage. I have a house from the early fifties, so it's a legal nine point four inch house. And currently the distance, which must have been five there then, between my garage and the property line is seven feet point three eight inches. So which is different than what needs to require now. So that's why I requested the hearings. It would be, like I said, a custom carport. My neighbors on either side are discussing that. They have no problems with that.
From what I understand, he also requests you two foot front yard.
In the front yard as well.
Is that, is that carport going to be attached to the house?
It's going to be attached to my garage. Not exactly. It might be a little gap, but it's, just because we are originally, Eric Cook is the person that's going to be building it most likely. And he saw when he did the diagram and he originally thought he needed by lot, he had three feet between the garage and where it starts. But if it can be attached, it would be.
I got a question for both of the projects. What on, can she attach it to her garage?
Yes. Is the garage already an attached structure of the home?
Yes. Can she attach it like a little shorter?
Is it open on all sides?
She could actually build it off the side. Is it, is this thing?
It comes off the front of her, the garage is in the front of her house. I was there, the garage was in, the garage was outside the house. But she wants the carport off the front. And she's short two feet from the road to be attached. I don't think she is. If she could attach it to the house or a very little area to the house, she's got enough room by my imagination here. I'll show you why. And you want to see the chip? I was saying.
It would actually look better if it attached to it.
They would look better if it attached to the house. Well, I mean, she could put an air duct.
Right, that's fine.
So this is, this is why, I should be lying. So she's looking to beat the road. If you go to this corner of the house here, she's got seventy two point three. But the garage, if she attaches it to here, this is where the carport is going to go. She's got, oh, that's six feet. There's a little angle there. Let's call it two feet. She still has that twenty four feet she needs in the carport.
Right off the front.
Right off the front. And we still have to give her a side yard variance, but we wouldn't have to give her a front yard variance. If she could attach to the front of the house or have a very small air duct, it would just make it without, without a student in that areas. So the reason I say that is I'm a little reluctant on the variance because her house is already close to the road. And I think that they can go out more than what the code allows.
What's that?
All the other houses back here.
What the carport going to be made out of?
It's going to have siding which matches my siding. It's a picture, it's stable roof. Siding in front, a roof that matches my roof. It's gonna look nice.
Anything on side walls of this carport?
No.
At the roof, right?
Basically, yes.
Six by six post running?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you, my point would be that she, we could do this without getting her a variance really close to the road. And her house already is close to the road now, so I'm just a little reluctant to do that, to give that variance. So you can give her the side yard variance. And she would be happy and do what she wants to do.
That's fine because he originally wrote twenty four inches for the distance of the carport towards the road. And I measured my van, which would be going under it, and I'm happy with twenty two, so that would be okay.
Should be fine. Cause I'm showing what I need here.
It's also that six feet.
Remembering seventy two point three feet to this corner of the house, but if you're attached to the carports, even though your house is on an angle, you're still getting another two feet here.
Except.
So your twenty four feet would add up. You'd be just under the limit, but you wouldn't have to give me that.
Okay.
Anything further?
No.
You have a choice. You can stay right there or you can have a seat.
Okay.
We're just going to be clear.
Okay.
Okay, would anyone like to come forward in regard to one one three one West River Road?
No one on line.
Who would like to make a motion to close the public meeting? Motion by Tim, I'm sorry, my Dan, all in favor?
So the house right now, she's not going any closer than the property line than our house is now. So I don't have a problem with that. And we can eliminate the two foot variance because she's really, she doesn't need it. She's very close, but she doesn't need it.
Right.
So I would make a motion. Do I make a motion?
About side side.
Oh, absolutely no sides.
Right. Alright, go ahead.
So I think make motion for eleven thirty-one West River Parkway. For a side yard setback variance of.
Eight feet.
Eight feet.
Yeah, motion by Tim, second by, my Dan, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
And I would like to add on that. There will never be side yards, or still maybe, or the variance is retracted.
Right.
So it'll always be open sided.
That's right. Where it's peaked, um, he had. Correct, just not side.
Yeah.
Because it could be blocked with. And outside here, just make sure you get a permit.
Okay, because I go to the architectural board, let's take it affirm. Yes.
Yeah. One building department. From CS.
Oh, okay. I thought I had to go to, I had to go to the architectural board meeting, which is, she's not already on there like yet. So if you want to call me and get the details, you can. Okay, great. Do I need some kind of paperwork for the variance?
No, you'll get that.
Okay.
So you basically got what you want.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, rationale.
Rationale, uh, for the side yard variance is, is right, is parallel with the house, in the property. Esthetically makes it look more pleasing.
Right.
Um, and it is in the nature of other houses in that area. The sides will always be open and never be enclosed.
Transition space. Okay, it's item number two, forty eight seventy five Eastern Road, Robert Weaver. Name and address, please. Four, please.
Robert Weaver, four eight seven five Eastern Road, everything.
Hey, Mr. Weaver, tell us what you'd like to do. You have a pretty good idea.
I do, okay. I want to build a new house. And I want to take a piece of land, a triangle piece of land from my existing house. And add it to the two lots that I already own next to my house. Um, if anybody went, if anybody drove by and looked at it, the piece I want to use, it looks like it belongs to that house already. I've never contained a previous owner, always contained that. It's a different elevation than our. Uh, so that's, is that the one we're doing first?
We're gonna do last split.
Last split, okay, okay. So the, because of the split. Because of the split, my original lot, my house is, it's twenty eight thousand two hundred and sixty four square feet. In the code R one B, it requires thirty thousand square feet. So I'm under the square footage, even though the lot's two hundred and fifty four feet. And the length, I'm delivering. So if we take that triangle out of it, which is twenty two hundred and fifty square feet, we'll end up with a, an existing lot of twenty six thousand square feet. It's short four thousand square feet. That's what I mentioned, forty three, it's four, uh, four eight seven five Eastern.
Also the brand.
Yeah. Brad, anything further? I'm on that one. Okay. Might as well stay right there.
Stay right here. Got a question. Weaver, how does that change the, the existing lot by taking that triangle away? How you, how you think I did that, did that a conforming lot? What does that do to that lot?
Where my house is, where I'm taking it away from?
That's right.
It'll still be, yeah, it still has the house on it and still not taking anything away from the house or driveway or anything else.
I'm talking about the size of the lot.
Yeah, that's what I would do.
That's what you're saying?
It's going to make it four thousand square feet less, or twenty two hundred and fifty square feet less. Okay, so we're, uh, the house already is below, lot already is below the minimum, but back in the day, I guess it was okay. So that's going to make it a little bit less, and that's finding out if you believe in this.
There was actually, I think the zoning board variance that was granted for that lot, but, that with a lot of this home is on, you know, where the home is actually located in, at that time, that what made that lot a legal forming lot to be twenty eight thousand two hundred and fifty feet. So that variance made that lot legal the way it sits. So when he's carving off this next little piece to put together piece, it really only thousands square feet difference. I know that the piece is a little bit bigger than that, but that's, it is what the, that's a lot. Less than thirty thousand, but it was made legal by variance that may become a legal lot out of non-conforming lot.
Ron, do you want to explain that in the mic so we could hear it in the recording?
Okay. So his original lot was supposed to be thirty thousand square feet. And a previous prior variance was granted before he built the home to reduce that lot size to twenty eight thousand two hundred some square feet. That made that lot a legal lot of that size, square feet at twenty eight thousand. So now he's coming in to say, I want to take a piece off of that to attach it to the other one to sort of straighten out the property line and parallel his driveway. All that does is reduce his twenty eight thousand square foot lot down to twenty six thousand. So it's really only two thousand square feet roughly difference between those two. If the variance gets granted, the lot once again becomes a legal lot at twenty six thousand square feet. So are we voting on that tonight?
Yes.
Yes. Keep going, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay. I think further, um, you'd have, everybody has a drawing. Do you want to see any pictures, photographs?
Yeah. Have those pictures?
But that's a, that's a different.
You know what it looks like.
Okay, would anyone like to come forward more against the variance at forty eight seventy five Eastern? No one on the internet?
No, there's not.
Okay. Would like to make a motion to close the meeting? Motion by Betty?
Well, second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay. This is a small amount. And the biggest thing is almost every lot on Eastern Road started out as a cottage. So they're all messed up. I didn't wait to look at it. I don't have a problem myself. Your friends.
I don't need a problem. Have a problem. Even the driveway grants, he, for one foot is mystical, but on the other hand, he owns the lot. So it's not like he's. Frigging on some of our neighbor dirt.
Okay. Would like to make a motion for a twenty two hundred and fifty foot, twelve foot variance at forty eight seventy five Eastern. Yeah. Alright, tell me that motion. Motion by Dan, second by.
It's not, that's not, it's not on my paperwork.
I, I got it here as a fourth, fourth, those are slightly variant variance.
We're gonna make a four thousand square foot area variance from thirty thousand square feet down to twenty six thousand square feet. No. With the driveways on that two foot, okay, yes, that's what we're doing.
Well, here's the problem. It was already a big lot at twenty eight thousand. Okay.
Right.
And now he wants to make it only six thousand.
Right. That's why I guess we're not, wow.
So we need, so the variance needs a part, we need.
Four thousand square foot variance.
No.
No, you're going to.
Twenty eight to twenty six.
Alright, so the, the numbers aren't there wrong. My numbers are here. I just want to make sure the numbers are, we should be looking at a two thousand or.
Excuse me, two thousand.
Two thousand two hundred and fifty square foot?
Exactly.
Okay. You want a variance first?
Yes.
And then as far as thousand variances, rip wrong.
Right.
Okay, thank you. I'll go back and reread it.
Who made the original motion?
I did.
Yeah.
Okay, I remember from the three, thirty thousand square foot requirement down to.
No, no, we're moving to twenty eight, twenty six.
That's right, it is twenty eight, twenty six.
Okay, then I'll go off of this one. We'll make a motion, reduce it from twenty eight thousand two hundred and sixty four square feet down to twenty six thousand square feet, making it a variance of two thousand two hundred and fifty square foot for the driver.
Right. It's a good. Motion by Dan, seconded by.
I'll second.
My John? All in favor?
Alright.
Okay.
It's just different numbers.
Rational.
Rational is, seriously, it's my hook. And, and obviously you're going to take down two houses over there. They're not in great shape, they're cottages, to make a beautiful home there. I'd rather have that than what we've got there that's existing. It doesn't change the character of the neighborhood one bit.
Well, in addition to that, in character of the neighborhood, many houses, I think that many houses are also to the water and also to the road on that side than what code allows. It's just the way it is.
Yep.
So I always love to do the driveway variance.
Driver variance, okay.
So.
From three foot, I'll make a variance from the three foot from the lot line down to supposed to be two foot away from the thing, giving it a one foot driveway setback.
Motion by Dan, seconded by. Tim, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay, rational.
Again, it's a minor difference.
Minor difference. Or to the neighborhood. And out of all these rationales, we also should add that he owns both lots. So again, very new situation there.
Right. He owns all three. Okay, next one, forty eight sixty five East River.
Wait, we, we got, we got. No, 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 we got one more, there is about it. We got a minimum lot depth required for buildable is two fifty, proposing a hundred. I'm gonna give a hundred and fifty square foot variance for the east lot line.
Okay. You want a motion by Dan? This, is that what you wrote?
The third one is just minimum lot depth requirement for buildable. Okay, you've got three variances here, Brad. Now, if you can, I'll let you know. I won't go by what you wrote.
I don't shoot him. You don't necessarily have to do that one?
No, because that was beyond the next, that's the next lot, you know?
No. It's already there. That was originally granted with the house that exists.
Right, so we don't have to.
By that previous variance. And I know that's pinned on to that, but.
It says revised from original to add. I mean, that what was written by you guys and given to me.
Right, so.
So do you want a variance or not?
He doesn't need it.
He doesn't need it.
Really doesn't need it?
So go to lie through it.
Granted, you can, but he doesn't have to have.
That's for the house that's already existing. My house is already there.
Yeah.
Okay, I move it.
So can I put a lie into it? We don't need a third variance?
We don't need that third variance.
Strike the third variance. After the clarification from the town building inspector. Okay, would you get the justifications? Item number three, forty eight sixty five East River, Teresa Weaver. I'm assuming you're going to speak for us.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Name and address.
Robert Weaver, four eight seven five East River Road. Okay, tell us what you'd like to do. I'd like to build a new house on the avenue of forty six five East River. And I need a couple of variances for that.
Okay.
So we need, uh, front yard setback. It is fifty foot from the lot line, uh, proposing it at fifteen feet from the lot line. So I need a variance for thirty five feet from the front yard setback. And.
We folk color.
Yeah.
So it shows the two existing cottages, both would come down, and then the red square that you have is the proposed building space. That's the maximum space that I would want to build in. It could be less than that, but that's the maximum.
This square footage coming down now.
House about thirty five minutes.
So when I went down with today, I was looking at where he's positioning the new house. Let's just say the house is as big as, track as the rectangle drawn out here. If you look at just off the porch, it, you know, drawing looks from what I can tell, it only comes out a tiny bit further than the front porch is now on the house. And then if you look at the other house, it's only a little bit more than that. Really don't have a problem with it because he's squaring the house off to the road. I see what he was trying to do there, and the amount that's going to be there. And it is a result of this, that, uh, most making, I kind of out rather looked at the other houses, and it's a tight, it's a tight neighborhood. It's just, it's. It's just my thoughts on it.
When the drawing that you have, you can see in the little porch and the curved staircase, there's curved sidewalk. And it goes up to that staircase. So the end of that staircase is where the road is.
What about, what about the house where it's near the road, near the river, the sightlines? The lot next door, there's no sightline concerns there.
There's no house on the other side, and there's no ability to build a house on the other side. I hear on the side, I'm okay with it.
And you're okay with it?
I'm okay.
No sign of paper to that?
No. I'm okay.
This is not my place, but just out of curiosity, is there a driveway coming? What's that? Is there going to be a driveway?
Yes. Yeah, it's going to be a front lawn garage, not a.
For the short, that's all.
Yeah. Well, plans aren't anywhere near done, those ways.
Yeah, I understand.
It's one step at all.
If we wanted to grant this variance, you didn't need quite as much square footage. The preferred button would be to shave it off the roadside so that the house would be back further from the road.
We could do that. I can move it back from the road, but yes, if it's less than the, if it's going to be less than the, the, uh, variance you're granting, I want to keep the backyard as close as it is. If the house is narrower, then I would not come forward, I would come forward less.
That would be better, but.
But I don't want to tell you that I can do that because we want to have, I don't want the house to be a straight line across the front, so it's going to have to have some characters to it.
It is a, it is a tight neighborhood, a little bit of a house, so.
And if it makes them unique.
Yeah.
Unique, that's a good word. They were all fast.
Anything further? Not unless somebody has some questions. Back to, stay right there. Anyone like to come forward in regard to the two variances, forty eight sixty five Eastern River? Heck, anybody there?
Nope.
Yeah, you want on that?
Nope.
Okay. Would like to make, like to make a motion to close the public meeting? Motion by Betty, second by Dan, all in favor? Okay. We have a unique situation here, two unique situations. Front and rear yard variances. We also have a situation where there's, things messed up, like down the street. What you're from.
Is that called in compliance?
I don't know. Most of what he's intending to do is take down two houses. There are a cottage, high sor houses, like, no, that's um, to, well, you know, a nice house in that area, which is going to cover where he needs setbacks. It's going to be just a little bit bigger, but it's not what they want from what's already there. That's correct. You know, that's what I was getting at. So it's not a lot.
Rear side of one, one house, virtually nothing. Right? And on the other house, it's only a matter of a couple of feet in front here. Right?
Good. That's something there, isn't it? Do you have room in the front for the septic? I'm not a measure.
Yeah.
Get rid of the other house.
And that'll be, and that'll be all controlled by Erie County for the septic anyway, so.
So I'm just curious because he had his house all in place and was north putting.
Yeah.
Someone like to make a motion for a, uh, let's see. I'll make a motion, thirty five foot front yard variance at forty eight sixty five Eastern River. Are you making a variance or not?
When you're making it. I'll be clear.
I think you go more to the fire.
I think so. Yeah. Forty eight sixty five East River, East River Road, uh, variance for required front yard setback of thirty five feet, but front yard setback.
Motion by John, circled by.
I'll second it.
Yeah. All in favor?
Forty eight sixty five.
What, 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 we got the rationale there?
So we do the rationale of the end of the.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, forty eight sixty five East River Road, required rear yard setback of twenty seven feet.
Twenty eight?
I've got twenty seven, I'm sorry.
I got twenty eight. Twenty seven and eighty.
Twenty eight. Twenty eight fifty two five.
Yeah.
Forty eight.
The second.
Oh, my goodness. Second by Dan. Motion by John, second by Dan, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay.
Rational. Uh, the two existing houses that are coming down are almost as far forward than he needs the front yard variance for. Uh, so it is a small amount from what's existing, right on the front side. Uh, and same holds true on the back side. Very little amount to the, uh, property line on the rear side. And it is almost exactly the same as the two houses that are coming down, the distance. So it's essentially going in the same footprint on the back of the house, almost, uh, to the right, to the river. Um, also, the character of the neighborhood is like that, in other words, there's many, uh, houses in that area that have so much situation where they're very close to the road. Uh, guys don't have a big backyard because houses were built on those lots. Right? Who knows?
Nope.
No, thirdly, the fact that, you know, this is waiver eligible properties.
You can go, I'm good. Thank you very much. Actually, everybody's time.
Do we get a tour? Or not? Can we tour? Do we get to tour?
By all means, yeah. I, I do have a question though. Maybe Ron can answer. When can I take down the two houses? Do I have to wait for building permit or?
You need demolition permit.
But I need. What comes first, the building permit or the demolition permit or?
Look, we demolition need for a, a, a few times.
Always with the building, but just because it's already existing in a pretty posthumous, right? We had problems on the places, and it just won't go building down, you know, it's wrong.
Yeah, mine, mine, I guess, but.
It may depend on when you're actually gonna do this too, because the variance is for six months.
Yeah.
Oh, well, we got.
Drawing.
I'll be in high gear now. Alright, yeah, I'll, I'll do it at the same time, I want to get the building from you. Okay, great, so thank you very much, appreciate you.
Okay, something that's not on the agenda. We received about an hour and a half ago, information about an old store, Stony Point. Staley and, and now Bull. And the town is talking about, which we don't care for, normally the city of. Instead of zoning. Uh, not a problem that much before, this is a little different situation, it's, uh, it's set by them. You're gonna want to do some things for the town if they're allowed. Yeah. It's still good to check, but I don't think it's a problem.
If they do need to set a zoning, that's just kind of a little south, we don't have a choice anyway.
Conversation. In this particular case, I think it's valid, it's not. Not involving money, it's, we need things for the town.
Right, and, and also, I would imagine the part, part of that's gonna be in front of the building, which is probably not, probably not so firm and.
I'm totally up on this.
All the. I know where it is, I just want to, yeah, but.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be making. I want to go.